Housing Authority is part of the city. So they, as part of the Housing Authority retreat, I think, set the goal of six affordable housing units in the next four years. Projects, not units. I call units as multiples, but six, six affordable housing projects within the next, was it three years or three years? And so obviously that you're going to need a significant capital investment in that to accomplish it. The other thing that we talked to the council about is looking at the safe harbor areas and the qualified census tracts and utilizing the money to really work with the neighborhoods and the qualified census tracts to really create more sustainable and resilient neighborhoods, tying into some of the plans that we've worked. Another component of that was early childhood education as being part of this. We were looking at ARPA funds versus CV funds that we have from CDBG and general fund. And so one of the recommendations we made to council in this budget process was to put a half a million dollars into early childhood education. And so thus far, the council said to move forward with that, so that'll be in the budget. And what was the other one, Karen? I know I'm missing one category. The whole neighborhoods?
Household assistance.
Household assistance and individual assistance. And what we talked to the council about is we really think that's one of the areas that is probably right for partnership because you all are already doing that and obviously you got more money than we did. And so how we use that to help individuals and households that are still reeling from the pandemic and how we can work together because you already have many of those projects, many of those programs and administer, you haven't set up where you're administering it. And I think that's a really good area for more discussions and partnerships. And so that's from a staff perspective. Oh, business assistance is the other piece, sorry. But that's from a staff perspective. We still have to bring that back to the council for defining. And I think when we look at business assistance, where it's, it's sort of hanging for us is the, the whole duplication of benefit component in this and the fact that if they got a PPP loan or they used any other federal funds and they may not qualify for this. And that's for Peter, who is our federal fund expert to kind of work through all of those issues. And so that's from a staff perspective. I don't know if the council has anything they want to add to that.
When you mentioned early assistance to early childhood education and right now, I think it's getting daycare back on his feet is, is probably the first order of business. What I would like to ask is when making that, the decision that you did or the recommendation that you, you did about how much to allocate to that in specific, do you have data about how many families that could be sending a member to the workforce that are not, that that would pull back into the workforce roughly?
So part of what we've talked about, and we've talked to the county group on this, is I think about 150,000 is actually for data collection so that we can start getting that information. Because I think generally we have some high level data, but we don't have what we need to determine really what is the need, what different categories do folks sit in. And so county may not know this, we partnered with What Works Cities, which was funded by the Bloomberg Institute, and they came in and it was about data informed decision making. And so they're part of this conversation so that we can really refine the data and bring more detailed information to council, which will then feed other conversations and what we really need to put into it. Because it was hard to say, at least from an administrative point of view, what's the number? Because there was just so much uncertainty in the data.
Yeah, I think we really need to prioritize children in this county. I think that should be obvious, but here the way it's shown, I mean, I estimated five women who were in workforce have now dropped out because they cannot find family. The last time they checked, there were over 400 children who were homeless. They are not counted in the homeless point in time survey. That's really obscene, you know, in this nation. Those children have been permanently traumatized by, you know, that personal, and you can't take a child, you know, no place to study. You have to hide all this in your, in your neighborhood in your house, in your car. You have to do something, and the reason, you know, the homelessness and the, which will only increase because payment for jobs, you know, the two-year-old payment is getting out, the additional time, you know, this is a little break, figures hanging on. So from, from the time that they are babies, in school later or college, they have all the responsibility to do something, to make their lives the best they can be. So they have all the opportunities, making us live the best we can. And it's very difficult, we don't know that. All the, the, the biggest pressure is about housing and housing crisis. And we see one of the worst things coming down, like, which is, like, there's investors coming in and sending everything that's built and building from something that's something divided into something that they were like, oh, some religion, that really touches us. I think only by looking for something about that, I'm capable of, 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 that we, that we did, to do something about this. So our, I just, if, if our kids are doing well, they're, they're, I don't think our kids are doing well. They don't have those. If you look at some cities, like Nashville, which has broke up the middle, Trail to Career, going to this at every stage, the kids want to make sure that opportunities are available to them a lot, that everyone, I think we need to, that there is something about that, so that every kid that is there, feels like they have the best chance to, like, have a future here, certainly others, all of them, that they may.
So I really appreciate you, Polly, raising that issue of children and child well-being and, you know, the housing poverty, you know, the connection there and, and the long-term effects of poverty on the whole trajectory of a kid. And there's a lot of data about the benefit of early intervention and quality early childhood education, but also the effect of toxic stress on kids when their parents are, are dealing with economic insecurity and how kids absorb that and it affects their executive function. So that's something that has always been very important to me. And I think embedded in this issue is, is mental health. We saw statistics, I can't cite them to you, but the spike in emergency room visits for suicide, suicidal ideation and suicide attempts for children was just heartbreaking. So, you know, we, through this process that, that Marta is leading, are collecting feedback and, you know, we just know from the comments that have been coming into the commissioners that mental health services are going to be real high up there. I think the trick here, and then I'll put this, hand it over to Marta, is to go from identifying the problem to identifying the solution. And we don't need to tell you this, you're under the same limitations as we are. We have to get this money not just, you know, allocated or identified or earmarked, we have to get it spent. And so, you know, we want to do that wisely, you want to do that wisely. And it's, I've just always found it's far more easy to identify the problem than to really identify those evidence-based programs that will address that problem.
Do we want to, do we want to drill down on the early childhood issue right now? Kind of where, that's where we were. I don't want to go further with that if, if we want to go somewhere else.
I just had one more ARPA question, if that's okay.
Yeah.
So let's, let's hold that for early childhood until the fifth agenda item. We're trying to do about 15 minutes for each of these and then it will, we'll get it all done.
All right.
Thank you for, though.
I was, just as a curiosity, because we're talking about this right now as the timeline, and I didn't hear you speak to that, and it sounded like those are staff recommendations is what you were sharing. So there's a whole process, I'm sure, and, and we're going through that too. But I didn't know if you started thinking about a timeline yet. And I'm in the hopes that our report that will be done at the end of October can inform from a community perspective. We would love to at least offer that as a resource, as, as I've shared in our mayor's meetings with a lot of you and in the consortium as well. So just want to make sure that you all are aware of that part of the timeline and maybe that could be helpful.
Yeah, yeah, we are, because Peter was talking to us, and I think the outside date is 2026, is that correct, Sandy? And so when you saw the, the, the six projects in three years was predicated on really having the last one out the door in construction with enough time to spend down and actually meet that timeline. And one of the things that I failed to mention is I failed to mention broadband because broadband is in there, especially digital divide. It's a little bit different for us because we already have it in place, and so we're looking at how we fill gaps. And then what we did talk to council about is that these are one-time dollars, so trying not to bring in ongoing expenses because of the one-time dollars and then creating a different issue down the road. And that was the other thing we talked about with them.
I, I had something I wanted to add, and I'm glad that Cleric Commissioner Levy mentioned this around mental health. And that's, you know, that's one of a huge factor that we are experiencing with our, our students, with our families, and especially during this COVID crisis. It's been ongoing, but I think through the pandemic, it has exacerbated and it really brought to light a, an issue that has been a problem for quite some time. And so one of the things, and I was grateful for Karen, but her, her name tag's turned around. I think she knows who she is. There you go. So, yeah, Karen, sitting in on one of the quarterly meetings for Mental Health Partners, and one of the things that we discussed was the, the turnover, the high turnover and being able, the inability to hire and retain therapists. So that inconsistency within the program, it's really, it's, within the organization, it's really difficult for patients to have that sense of consistency and connection with, with therapists. I know that it isn't ongoing funds, but if, as we're, as we're looking to put money into certain areas, you know, I would really, I would like to see money put in towards mental health, getting us through this pandemic. I mean, I think we're all in crisis and we're, we're in crisis mode. I was just telling Councilmember Peck that I think last year was difficult teaching, this year is, is worse. And I, in the 28 years that I've been in the profession, this is the single most difficult, challenging year that I've ever had. And, and that's me, I'm thinking I'm able to juggle many things, I, you know, I have a son with autism, I'm, I have a lot of resilience. I'm thinking of people who, early career teachers, people who are experiencing other traumas going on at home as well and dealing with loss, it's, it's unmanageable. And so, you know, I can tie in what we're experiencing in the education field and tie it into, you know, what our, our healthcare workers and our mental health psychiatrists and therapists are dealing with. And if there is something that we can be thinking about as we're looking to allocate funds to help address some of those issues as well. So that, that's my two cents.
I'll give it to you, Joan. Sit. I just wanted to ask, I think, both the commission and the city manager, whether on the front, on the spending front, whether there's been any thought given to some form of bootstrap spending? Because it's one thing to answer the, to ask the question, you know, how much should you allocate to this or that program and say, we need to study it and get more data, but the need for doing things like getting daycare back up and running is immediate. We aren't going to be on the road to recovery until those problems are solved. So it's just a question. And I'm handing the microphone to Joan because she and I were waving at the same time, but I hope we can answer the question.
Thank you. So I think all of the issues have been addressed and they kind of all roll into the same thing, but it is the mental health. And anybody who knows me will know that I've been on this subject for six years. Mental health affects everything and, and we do have an option next week in our budget process to decide where we want to use a half of our marijuana tax on mental health. But what we need from my perspective, and I know that the previous commissioners have heard this, is, from my perspective, is a facility. So when we're talking about hardcore dollars spent for sustainability, not Band-Aid type issues, but things that we can carry on after the, the funds are gone, I think that what we need is a one-stop-shop facility where our mental health partners, our alcohol, shoot, what's it called? Recovery cafe for addiction, where we can have hope and the hour center and people who are experiencing homelessness have a place to go instead of roaming around the city looking for different, different social things to help them. We have all of these things in our city, but a person who's experiencing homelessness or depression or mental health, they have to find these places. There's one on Kaufman, there's one on, over on Martin Street, there's, what I really would like to see are hardcore dollars into a facility where we can actually help people. And this is a larger discussion, but I think that would be something that is sustainable, that we can use in the future, and it isn't just a Band-Aid, it is moving forward.
So yes, because not all of it is for the data analysis, and so I think there is room within the half a million. We also have, we can look at our CDBG funds, and then as we look at the funds in general on, on the ARPA, we have capacity. And then on the mental health side, again, I haven't been briefed yet, Karen just told me there is mental health work in some of the projects that they're submitting, so I just wanted to answer the, yeah.
Okay, regional transportation. As you all know, we have the 119 BRT that is in progress, and we are doing our first and main transit station. But I also want you to be aware of the opportunity for rail. And I don't know what funding that ARPA or the county needs to put into that, if anything, but I would like, I would like that to be at the top of your list of transportation. We need, we need facilities, we need stations, whatever. I just want that to be at the top of that. We are, we do have two regional transportation options coming with BRT 119 and the Northwest Corridor as an alignment to the I-25 rail through Amtrak.
So, and you mentioned Cantor, Central 238 has created a passenger rail schedule. The board is becoming a massive, but Dr. Cog, so Dr. Cog has a lot of core slots, you know, Governor Polis, I think, has six, one of which is specifically designated for a corridor that does not get commuter rail, sounds like more than that. And, you know, and then there are some other spots that are earmarked, including one of those appointments, and one of which is, I think, a government organization, but I did sit out Dr. Cog on behalf of the board, and, and unless somebody, you know, objects or be to it, I am going to apply to be the Dr., one of the Dr. Cog, one of four, representatives on that. That's an opportunity to, well, really bring some money to this issue, which I think is the big thing that's been lacking. Even, you know, this 30% design study that initially people thought was going to be three to five million dollars, when RTB staff started looking at it and saying 11 to 13, yeah. So, you know, money is the thing, you know, I think it's the most realistic opportunity. But we, I know, you know, Marcus, our representative on 119 corridor, we've been really successful getting money for that. The, the bike path route on that corridor, I think is going to be really, really popular. We're making that a priority for our regional transportation planning. We sent a letter, which we copied you on, to RTB, really, you know, strenuously adapting to the lack of money coming to Boulder County for restoration of service, I think they got their attention. And it was really nice to see Shoshana Lou and Governor Polis support all at once. So, you know, I think I'm sitting down with our board members next week, or hopefully not, actually, just, you know, sitting down, you know, just to sort of jump on that point and see what we can do. But, you know, I always want to make sure that we're, when Boulder County is at the table, that we're speaking on behalf of everybody in Boulder County.
I just want to thank you, Claire, for that. And I also am going to apply to be one of the Dr. Cog appointees for that board. So thank you.
Yeah, I was just trying to, Claire, you were really well. But when we went down to Burlington Northern, Mike Bagley and others went down to Burlington Northern two years ago now, the RTB person thought the study would be about IANX. And he didn't put it on paper or specifically, he never emailed me back, he always called me back. RTB's got a way of their own things, but if you talk to your representative, you the representative of Boulder County on RTB, please ask them to keep pushing on this issue. We know our constituents want it, we care all the time. And that's just important, they're there, but they need us to keep reinforcing that. And then the bus routes, I mean, people who have lesser means really got hurt on this. And it's just bad. And remember, that's 0.6 tax that the fast tracks, the train is on four decks, so they're two different things we're talking about. But we just need to keep the lobbying going to make that a reality. And I'll just leave it at that. Anybody else want to talk about transportation? All right, some of these subjects go faster than others.
I don't want to say anymore, but I think this topic was one that was suggested by Longmont at the praising, I was so, wondered if you had anything else in mind here in terms of regional transportation planning, other than what we've already talked about?
You're going to start the highway to the city.
No, well, the option for transportation planning, I thought that was a Longmont topic.
Claire, I think it was when we first were going to have this meeting, when it was scheduled at first, and the discussion about the Front Range Passenger Rail and Amtrak wasn't really a reality at that time.
Just wanted to make sure we talked about it.
Just before you pass the mic.
Claire, could you, Claire, could you talk, do you have any more information to share about what the timelines might be for fleshing out the board or filling out the board for the Front Rail Passenger District? Review for us the counties that are involved, and what are the steps that you anticipate, as we talk about options, that you would anticipate that we all should be aware of, right? What are the thresholds we have to pass to go from a piece of legislation to an option, right, that's actionable?
Thanks, Jim. So the, so the governor's appointments, they're, they're likely to bill for those appointments, and I believe the governor has to nominate his six slots mid-March 2022, I believe. Those, he is doing that through the mutual boards commissions nomination process, and so if you go to the website, or if you have Paul, the board's permission, if you put your name in. So I know Dr. Cog is going to do it through their nominations process, and, and I believe all of them have to be deployed by the state. I'm not certain whether it's just the governor's appointments, maybe even have a job, Joan. But, so, so that board will be seated, and then it will become a special district and governed by the provisions of Central 238 and the rest of the Special District Act, Title 32. So all the regular provisions in Title 32, unless they're superseded by the Act, are going to govern. And it does have authority to impose a sales tax and, or, well, it's got authority for vote, act of war and sales tax. And it would be up to the district, the board, to decide what to put on the ballot. If there are some requirements in the bill to produce a detailed financial analysis before voting to the voters for a tax, there is, what did I say? Well, there were some provisions in there that, that Boulder County partnered up with City of Boulder and so other entities, I don't think Longmont was part of this, to make sure, well, they're trying to lean it towards the Northwest Rail Route because there are three routes that have been understudied. Route because there are three routes that have been understudied. And, you know, to try to make sure that there are performance numbers that are required so that evidently the Northwest Rail Route performs the best for the ridership and cost. I think, I'm trying to think of some of the other conditions that were in the bill as requirements before they could, before the district could go to the voters for a tax. I don't, there were a number of them in there. And then there are additional provisions that allow a specific station, subtax, to do station area improvements. So, within the half hour radius of the station, additional special district that would be formed. And that would be formed through the TID or LID process. Is that sort of what you were looking for?
Yeah.
I think, I'll just say, one thing I think we were really trying to be careful of as we were analyzing this bill was to try to get better representation that was proportionate to the population. So, the bill was originally introduced, all of Dr. Cog, which is close to 2 million people, three board seats. And it gave Pipe Peak Cog, which has, I think, about three quarters of a million. That has two. The South Central, basically the Pueblo area, had one. So, it was not, not fair at all in terms of population distribution. And I think we did a pretty decent job of distributing. But another thing we were really trying to work hard on is to make sure that, you know, that we actually know what kind of total commitment there's going to be before going to voters. Because, you know, there's a concern, given, you know, what looked like disproportionate representation for the southern part of the state that's really interested in having a connection up with the South and Chief, that the resources would, that off the top of the taxing authority up here, all the money up here, would goes down south and fund the routes down there. And so, we put language in the bill that the area for the first phase improvements had to reflect the areas with the highest ridership and high, you know, potential for maybe regenerating traffic or something like that. So, we put some criteria in there to try to make sure that the North Hunt Range area, where we have the rates of congestion, we generate the most green hot gas emissions. We need the most remaining equipment to be the Pueblo spawn.
So, the subtax for this district, the legislature is putting this app to keep the Southwest Chute Chief going, and from a big picture point of view, this is probably, this is the biggest special district they were created by the legislature in terms of people who would be taxed. And so, the concerns, the Claire was talking about it very real. And as far as time and that tax, the big question, and then the federal, they talk about an X sector. But the concern that we get our fair share and we have federal money so that we don't tax people and don't get much, we try and figure out.
My concern is that we've been talking about public transportation and connecting Color, all of Colorado, from Kansas to Utah, from New Mexico to Wyoming, since the '70s. And we haven't done it. And it's only gotten more and more expensive, and now it's prohibitively expensive in every single way. So, now what we're doing is breaking it up into special districts. And we're already part of a special district, as we know, and Longmont has gotten less and less every year. So, it's going to be very hard to get people in Longmont to vote for yet another special tax district when we have seen our service cut and cut and cut. And now people talk about bus rapid transit. I was one of the first group of women to drive a bus in Boulder in 1974 or something like that. And I can tell you, there is no such thing as bus rapid transit. A system that is not discreet from the roads is never going to be any faster than any car. So, although it may have less stops, it is still subject to all the same problems with car accidents, with weather conditions, with everything. So, unless you have light rail or rail of some kind, or something that is separate from the road system, it's not going to be very good public transit. We could have that. And I was very excited about Governor Polis, who does seem to have a vision for what we can do. We can't keep paying for more and more and more roads. Even if they're electric vehicles, they're still going to be on the roads. And we can't keep, we have no way to finance it unless we change something about the gas tax with electric vehicles going to be more and more prevalent, which is a good thing. And so, we really need to, it seems to me, advocate for transit systems, whatever means that is, that are their own discreet path. And every other country does this, and many places in this country do it. Colorado has problems because we don't have the mass of people to support this. But we really did have better transportation in the '70s than we do now. You could get on a bus and go to Meeker, Colorado. To do the same thing now, you would have to either go to Grand Junction and rent a car, or go to Steamboat Springs and rent a car. This is ridiculous that we're going backwards. So, I would like to see us band together with addressing this on a statewide basis. Because frankly, what we saw, what we've seen in the RTD district is that only Denver has got this. Despite the fact that we voted on something which was supposed to be evenly built out, it hasn't been. And the meltdown of 2007 was used as an excuse for that, but they've never gone back. So, I support, I think we need to support any efforts to make it better. But I really do think we need to be thinking more on a statewide basis and more in terms of light rail or something that is separate from the road system as our basic connector, and then buses off of that.
Thank you.
I'd just like to get the central issue about the new proposed special district out on the table, because it is very large and there's a lot of people in it. It could be that Boulder County will never vote for it. What happens if, if the district passes, but not in Boulder County?
It's my district, so it doesn't...
Right. So, the, we could be voted into this district, even if the public of Boulder County does not, does not go along with it. I just wanted that to be on the record.
Right. You're right. And that's why we need to pay attention to it. We've been trying to do that. And also to keep the railroad order in place, your railroad strategy. That's going to be critical. But I'm going to shift to the next topic, so we can try to get more attention. Regional solid waste group plan and composting. A little summary, we have a compost facility proposed. We threw that, pushback from our managers. And we just hired the person to help us figure out composting, solid waste solutions, not necessarily facility, the ways to improve that issue. We both got, it's highly supportive. It does seem like some people want to hear that, but anybody want to try to get on solid waste?
I would just like to say, I don't like the characterization, it may have begun that way, but I don't like the characterization of this was something about people not wanting it to be near them. I think it's something about markets. You know, with a composting facility, you have material that goes into the composting facility, and you have the material that comes out of the composting facility. And on both sides, the point of the whole thing is, A, to reduce methane emissions from what would otherwise be compost, or what, what would otherwise be landfill waste, excuse me. But then you have the carbon footprint associated with getting the input to the composting facility to the facility, and you have the carbon footprint of getting the resulting products of the composting facility, the compost, the tea, all of that stuff, to where it's going to be used. And I think the fundamental local objection to the first proposal was that there was no market for the product here in Boulder County. So, I don't really like the idea of, of saying it was because people didn't want it nearby. It was because there was no market for it nearby.
Is there, I'm not certain, I'm not certain what the take is from the, we heard a lot from the neighbors, and I'm certain that markets are an issue. What would be helpful to me, we kind of, I was kind of surprised by the whole proposal. And I don't know what the disconnect was between our staff and your staff. So, it would be helpful for me to know if there, what's the level of discussion? Is there, is there momentum going forward? It's good to know you've hired somebody. Is that, is there going to be a conversation into which we're invited, or you're going to flesh out options and then kind of ask for reactions from municipalities? How will this unfold? Because we can't solve it ourselves. It's only going to happen when we do it as a partnership. And, and we need to do it. I mean, that's there, we just can't get to the commercial aspects of this on our own. And yet, we need to get, we need to get there. So, you know, what are your thoughts about, what's the timeframe? Are there steps? What do you need from us to move it in some direction?
Thanks for that, that question. I, two things, I want to make sure to touch on a couple of that in how we get in this number three. This is about zero waste. This is about the fact that we all live in a country and a county that wastes. And that, really, I want to pull it back to that because it really isn't about specifically a compost facility or neighbor or nominee. It's really about how do voters who decided and residents who agreed that were wasteful. And then we need to look at options about how we are going to be more efficient, more effective with saving up in one little area. Like, we could talk about finding all those businesses, but this is one of those responsibilities. So, I just want to make sure that we don't forget that piece of this conversation. And to your question about what's up next, what's going to happen? And yes, we hired somebody, I think, from the folks, those are excited about that opportunity to do the engagement, to go through a public process, and to set this conversation up, whether it's a partnership, whether it's smaller projects, what is, to how do you incorporate partners frustration. There's a lot of other pieces. We just want to make sure that, one, that other piece of it really is the focus, and ensure you all, as well as those that are watching and participating online, that there will be a public process. I believe that this work is really committed to ensuring that we can do all of our work in, in new ways, engaging the public. And our county administrator has talked about it a lot, but I think it's great that Dan is here with us.
I'm trying to stop those words. Watch her tell me I can't talk. I, well, one key thing in what Mark said, is that the being our asking this staff person to do is really look at whether it is a facility that we need. Facilities are worth sight, and, and they're expensive. And it does, you know, I think the previous project, you know, kind of, was driven by the thought that we need a facility and we need more time. That there's something virtuous about, about two pair of our own weights. And that sounds very virtuous. But I don't know that there's, that composting in Boulder County is apparently any better than composting anywhere else, other than the greenhouse gas emissions, you know, driving here and right now. So, there is that. But, you know, we need to just really open this conversation up. Maybe it's a service with smaller facilities. Maybe it's spending more time with, with the ag community and finding ways to actually do it directly on site. So, we just really have to open the conversation up. And really want to hear your, the thoughts of Longmont on this. Because you were, you know, you are really important partners for us, but now I'm the first to realize.
I just wanted to add two things. First of all, give you a name. Noel Hyson is the person that we hired. Definitely be familiar with him. He works for the City of Boulder. And so, has some good local experience and is really a strategist around zero waste in general. He will be the staff person who works with the Resource Conservation and Bouldery Board. So, Longmont has a member on that board. And a lot of these conversations about, you know, where are we going with zero waste, whether it's infrastructure, whether it's cooking, all of that will go through our cap as we evaluate these capacities. So, I just wanted to make sure that our major work that is represented on.
I was all for this facility. I am very sorry that Dr. Cog, I think it's really unfortunate that a small group of very wealthy people with a very savvy public relations person and a whole slew of lawyers were able to derail this. But I do think that there was a problem in that the previous, the previous commissioners did not really alert some of the places. I know Erie was very upset and all kinds of things. But as for a market, I mean, every, every municipality around here needs mulch and very, this stuff for their work. And gardeners need mulch. We have the footprint of driving it to somewhere in, our stuff to somewhere in Boulder County as opposed to where we drive it now, which is far, far away. It is much smaller. It is, makes perfect sense. And we do need a regional composting facility. And I, I hope we can arrange that because it is so much better and less expensive for everyone to do it this way. And I certainly think there's just as much of a market here as there is currently, which is, you know, the facility we use is far, far away, but he manages to have a market for that. So, I don't see that that's actually an issue. But I really do support us having one. In Boulder County, it just makes sense for the future.
If I could clarify, I have a whole folder full of letters from organic farmers who said, "I can't use that compost." I have a whole folder full of letters from organic backyard farmers who said, "I can't produce, I can't use what that facility would produce." They gave their reasons. And so, I'm not saying we shouldn't have a regional facility. Maybe we should, and maybe we shouldn't. But we should have a regional facility where the produced compost will be an acceptable product to our local people. And I don't think we can overlook that. All compost is not the same. All green activity is not the same. And just because people have good lawyers doesn't mean they're wrong.
I would like to also say, it wasn't just a small group of old folks that said it, you know, who much of the agenda was important. Frankly, it was the cost. They value...
I bet this could have been the entire topic for our whole team. And you know, I was invited to look at some of the, just knowing that for Longmont, it was exciting, seeing how they managed to be here, like working together, helping round tables, or the fellow community, so participated in how this happens. When I invited, instead of, we're more focused on, you know, then having the option, just hammering for money, moving for fun, are we going to do this, do that? We have a public inventory, right? We have an issue, we try to have a facility, but we don't have public market. And we can create options by national, the federal regulations, guidelines, etc. We have a policy that we just have to have the will to make change in the industry. That looks like public, we're not compounding for a certain amount of time, called 18, 19 months, that other public, the rational, we were able to allow second home or, or dancer, over 100, I think, over 17,000 months, when they're up and covered. Those are properties that AMR have, the renters need, but they need to open a financial license and the function of that, and the inventory. And what is typically into the home, that would open a market, a property without having to build a science box, and, etc. That coupled with what after the 2004 case, was Danny made a very mad decision, offer what was called personal condition, we can do the same thing. Coupled with new housing inventory, and an ordinance that looks like, and looks like, buyer, seller, purchaser, who are going to live in a home versus investor, buyer, have the only opportunity for the first 10 or 14 days, to look at property, offer our property, and contact. It does not eliminate investors from the market. It is priority, when you say that people have a workforce, our teachers, our sponsors who live in our community, be given priority, and they're efficient. The other option would be to be some type of 2010, 301 exchange. That is a tool that allows property to our best. It requires them to settle a quality of life or life. So, I'll give an example, somebody has a investment property, they want to have, they have to buy another compost, this could be partnered with a chat, a land trust, some type of investment that's also, investment committed to creating, workplace housing, industrial housing, senior housing, etc. So that there's still investment, but it doesn't require a purpose of, like, a company that's, or, and, so I'd make sure that we look, we have a government versus what we were trying to do, that we were talking about in the county, how it's happened, and how we can have, and how we can prove about proof.
So thank you for that. I really believe that we need to be looking at it. It's not going to be one solution, there's going to be many, and just concentrating on one, one piece is not going to solve the problem. And I really appreciate that you brought in these, these other creative approaches. So that is definitely something I want to take a deeper look into, on top of, you know, continuing what we're doing to increase our stock, to increase higher density, and a myriad of options for, for folks to be able to, to buy it by a home, whether it be a condo, whether it be a single-family home. But, you know, definitely continuing that, what we're doing, but also looking at other options as well. So, yeah, I am interested in knowing more about that.
So, you know, one, one was powerful to me, the fact that it has been really been a positive collaborative partnership, I guess, and, you know, the conversation about the, the, the revenue source and transportation, stand alone, is this not, you know?
Try this one.
So, yeah, I broke the mic. Whether to revisit the idea of a countywide revenue source for housing, and, you know, we are going to be going out with a poll, I've been hearing soon, I've been hearing that for about six months, but I think it's going to be soon, to just try to test the waters on what, how people are feeling here post-COVID, or, we're not post-COVID, we thought we would be. But are, you know, are people feeling still uncertain enough about the economy that they wouldn't be supportive of new revenue sources for any number of things, and housing and transportation is going to be part of that? But, you know, when we talk about solving the housing problem, or at least addressing it, we really do want to have housing in every community, affordable housing in every community. But barring that, and because sometimes, you know, we do have just a mismatch of jobs and housing, and, you know, with two-income families, maybe one person gets to live close to their job, but the other person doesn't. We have a problem here with the cost of transportation and housing, and the drive till you qualify might mean that you have an affordable mortgage, but your transportation costs, coupled with your mortgage, are now unaffordable, and you are dependent forevermore on, you know, on a working car. And so, all the more reason to try to locate housing in the community in which people work, but I think we also, it comes back to that transportation issue, and having better multimodal transportation options, so that if people don't live in the community in which they work, for whatever reason, choice, maybe it's not affordability, that they have affordable transportation options as well. So I, we, you know, we do have to think about those two issues as being linked.
Claire, I'm glad you mentioned transportation, because Councilwoman Peck and I, former mayor, toured the transportation-oriented housing down in Denver, which is really interesting, because I think we all know that it costs nine to 12,000 or more thousand dollars a year to have a car, and if, then you're, you're only making $20,000 a year, there's nowhere you can live. And so if you can have something that is on a, on a transportation line, you have much more of a chance of doing something. But I, I really think one thing that we need to prioritize in the country, and certainly in Boulder County, is homeownership, because that is the only way, we can't, to get out of a cycle of poverty. You know, we lost at least approximately 10%, I think, I'm sure Martin knows about this, and Aaron knows about this better than I do, but during the last giant meltdown of 2007 and '08, we lost close to 10% of homeownership, and it hasn't really come back. In fact, it's getting worse and worse. So we have to find ways to increase homeownership for the stability of, of every community. If a child, for instance, going back to kids, has to move every three years, or every year when the landlord jacks up the rent, then that's no life for a child. It's, it's very disorienting, and that family is going to be living in poverty or constantly stressed out financially. So not everybody will, will always have plenty of renters, but we used to be a nation where everybody, or most people aspired to having, owning a home, and people seem to be giving up on that in despair, and that's, that's a very bad sign for our communities. So I think if we can explore things like land banks, land trusts, cooperatives, which are difficult, but better than not owning anything, because intergenerational wealth, particularly for people who have been traditionally marginalized by everything, is critical to actually having a stake in your life.
I get really stoked seeing the spoke on Coffin Street going up, that's so great. Every time I come, drive up to Longmont, I look around, and it's just like, wow, it's happening. So thanks for your work with us on doing that one. And bit by bit, that helps, right? So, but let's get to early childhood education, and then I'll do a call for public input. I don't see many folks, but I'll do it anyway. So if anybody wants to kick us off, please do.
I'll just start. We, this has been a priority for this council for several years, and Marta and Claire were both with us, what, 10 days ago or so, when the governor came and spoke, both to promote what he's done with his initiative in the new early childhood office, but to also reinforce where we are as a community, working in partnership with the Early Childhood Council of Boulder County. We have an action plan, the data, the investment that Harold talked about earlier, hopefully a year from now, we can answer the question of how many parents and how many kids are unserved, what the needs of our employers are, right, in terms of their employees, because this, the problem is not just a Longmont problem, you know this better than we do, it's a regional problem. It's at least a county problem. The Longmonters who work in, you know, other parts of the county, or, you know, those folks who work here, every, all of them with, with children, especially if they're preschool-age kids. So for us, it's, it's not just early childhood education, it's childcare, right through that continuum to the time kids are in school, and then the needs of kids, school-age kids, you know, when they're, when mom and dad aren't around, and, and kids need supervision. We asked folks in the event that we hosted 10 days ago to reimagine a whole industry. And as we started this conversation, talking about the best and highest use of ARPA funds, certainly this is going to be part of it, but, but it would be a mistake to think that's going to solve a problem. The, the needs are so, the system, we, we lack a system. We need a system, not unlike the K-12 system, right, where it's funded on a stable, ongoing basis, where they, where the, where the work is, the employees are professionalized. How much of that can be at a county or local level? In our plan, we've got some options that we think would, would help satisfy, or meet state, state standards for the preparation and the credentialing of employees without getting caught up in some of the regulatory disincentives that occur at the state level. But at the end of the day, this conversation that's unfolding here, I know it, well, I don't know, I believe at some point it's going to end up on your agenda, because we're going to talk about solving this on a countywide basis. Maybe it's on the, maybe it's on the desks of the school boards at Boulder Valley and St. Brain Valley School District, but I suspect more likely it's going to be something where there's a group going to come to you to say, "We, this only gets solved." I know this was something that was presented to Larimer County Commissioners in the fall, and, and they passed on putting something on the ballot, but I can just tell you, that's an active conversation, and it's going to be really helpful sooner than, rather than later, to get some idea of where, where you are, how you think about both the nature, the scale of the problem, and, and the options for solving it from your perspectives on a countywide basis.
Tim, thanks for that. I wondered if you had any updates originally when I was working on that committee with y'all. The invitation was about a special district and potentially countywide, and just curious if that's still in the conversations as a solution to get to the early childhood funding, because it's changed some. It's gotten more significant, and the needs gotten more dramatic.
Yeah, we had Marta early on, was it, one of our troops showing up every week. And one of our working groups was, we're really organized, organized around a question, special district, yes or no. I mean, there was, we never answered that question. There is no conclusion to that, on a, on a range of options or continuum, right, that's somewhere along, continue with other possibilities. We know, we know counties, counties have created, have, have successfully proposed dedicated sales tax or property tax, I'm not certain, in Summit County, or, you know, Gilpin Counties, what, those counties that have done that. I know what was proposed in, what was going to be proposed in Larimer County was, I think it was, actually, I think it was a county initiative as opposed to a special district. I'm not surprised the commissioners passed on it, just based on how, I understood it to be organized and how money was going to be distributed. But, but there's something to learn from that experience, what they proposed, and, you know, how that was analyzed by those commissioners. And I don't know, Marta, what, what ultimately a proposal is going to look like, you know, it's going to be, everybody understands you've got all kinds of things potentially that you've got to consider putting on ballots or not. But I do know this, is we won't solve this problem with one-time funding, no matter how much money it is. And we, and it won't, we won't recover fully from this pandemic unless we can stabilize a workforce, and we won't stabilize a workforce by dragging, dragging the pre-pandemic childcare system into the future. It's just not tenable.
So I was, I guess I was just going to say the obvious, really, which you, you sort of said already, Tim, is just, the, the problem can't be addressed without an infusion of public money. You know, people complain, rightfully so, about the cost of, of childcare, particularly infant and toddler, but yet our early childhood workforce is making poverty wages, sub-poverty wages, and people wonder, why is childcare so expensive when childcare workers are so poorly paid? It's because it's very labor-intensive, you need a facility, you need constantly, you know, to renew your equipment, you know, it's expensive, and the, you can't, the only way you can solve that is public money. And, you know, Denver has the, I think it's a mill levy, I don't think it's a sales tax for the Denver preschool program. So I think we're going to have to go that direction. I just don't think there's any way, not only for the workforce, and the workforce is really important, but for the well-being of kids. They need quality childcare, they need to be taken care of by people who are committed to that profession, and, and not, be able to form bonds and relationships, and not have that high turnover. So, you know, we've, there are so many needs, and every time we talk about the kinds of things that need to go on the ballot, childcare is one of them, and I, I guess it really is something to think about, whether, you know, with a special district, that would be. special district, that would be, you know, a subset of the county and whether that's the way to do it, whether to do it countywide. I don't think we know. We would really love to continue this conversation and get your thoughts. The need is certainly there throughout the county. I don't think anybody would say, we're, we're good. We don't need any more help. So we'll, we'll see where that goes.
So I'm really proud that Longmont has, this is one of its visions for, in our work plan as, as what we want for our city and county. But when we discuss this, I don't want us to forget that childcare is not just in centers. It is also in homes for infant through 18 months old, 18 month olds. And I, and I do know that this is part of Governor Polis's vision as well. So when we talk about the expense of childcare, it has to be equitable. A lot of people do childcare in homes because of the cost and because of the consistency of the childcare provider from birth through kindergarten. Some people stay with the same childcare home for five years, whereas in a childcare center, the, the teacher, whatever you want to call them, the caregiver changes depending upon who, the shift, when they're employed, et cetera. And it is a choice of a parent as to how they want their child cared for. So when we discuss this, I don't want us to forget that part of it, that if there is a tax in some way, either through an initiative, through a special district, et cetera, it's going to have to really take the cost of childcare to the lowest possible amount. Because that is where the stickler is at the end of the day for parents. So.
Is there anybody here for public comment? I see no one. So we'll close that part of the meeting and continue on.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to make a comment on childcare. I think once again, we are, this is a very, very strange time, but we are also extremely lucky to have a governor who not only is future thinking in terms of transportation, but also has been involved with daycare since he was born, literally. I worked for his parents who had a baby and then realized they didn't know what they were going to do with that baby all day. And so they started asking their employees and their employees said, yeah, we've got the same problem. We don't, you know, and so they started a daycare in their building. And I have been trying for years to try to get businesses to understand that they could pool resources. I mean, their employees would be less stressed, would have more time, would be happier and in every way, things would be better if they would pool resources and create sort of little regional childcare centers, or if they have enough room, they could turn their, you know, part of their office into childcare. A lot of things have been done on a statewide basis. As Councilwoman Peck said, it isn't just a matter of incentives and money. It is a matter of the fact that it is, it is a very difficult job and people, the daycare centers often make a lot of money, a lot of money. But the people working there who are almost exclusively women are paid extremely poorly. And they also have to keep up, they have a lot of education they have to go through, a lot of hoops they have to go through. A lot of that has been changed by our terrific state legislators and the governor by helping people who are going through daycare education to get their certificates in a more timely way and helping them with financial incentives. You can't have a daycare center without daycare workers. And so it is many different approaches, like everything. It's not just a matter of taxing people and giving them, you know, having money available. It is also that you have to have daycare workers who will stay with them. Nobody wants to just weigh, warehouse their child. They want good care. That's you. I mean, the person taking care of your child is you in absentia. So you want them to care about your child and also educate your child. And that takes a very special person. So money can't buy that. But, you know, if you help people, good people actually get their certification and you help small family, people who are educating people in their homes to do a little better and make it easier for them. If you help out, for instance, we helped provide masks and various things for daycare centers. If everybody helps those daycare centers a little bit, we can have a better situation for everybody. So that's what I would like to see is an appreciation for what can be done on a statewide basis. We have already passed a whole lot of things in the last three years that make it much easier for daycare workers to actually be daycare workers. And that's a very important part of this.
Just one more, one last comment. The data on the number of licensed providers is pretty clear. That, that number has been declining year over year. Polly's right, we're not going to solve this, or Joan's right, we're not going to solve this through licensed providers only. But the, one of the interesting data points we heard from Larimer County, the, Larimer County Council had offered 48, had made 48 job offers last year. They, they made, they hired 48 people. Forty-five of them had already left in the first year. So you think just to bet the cost, I mean, you, you know, you understand this in terms of the cost of turnover, but that's a result of our failure to professionalize, compensate, support a, a whole industry and, and those people who we, we have tried to recruit to be part of it. So, I mean, that, that, that's just not sustainable. And obviously that's going to take money and that's going to take public money, I suspect, if we're going to, if we're going to reimagine and then respond to what we imagine in terms of a, a new era of childcare.
Childcare or any of these other topics are on the bottom of the agenda? It's the hockey puck drop. Get your stick ready. Take a swing at it. Everybody wants to go home?
Well, there are about three topics on the bottom that I'm interested in. I just want to bring to your attention that we have a, Boulder County has an opportunity to possibly look at having an equestrian center at the Boulder County Fairgrounds. And I would like that to be at some point in the future, in 2022, to be a discussion that we open up with the commissioners to see if there's a possibility or any interest in furthering that discussion. I brought that up six years ago. So I just want to revisit it. The other thing is safe lots for sleeper vehicles. We have a lot of people, we have three safe lots for cars and there are 33 people who are living in their cars right now that are waiting to be vetted to get into those safe lots. We have so many people who have been unhoused for various reasons. I would love it all to be COVID so we can throw a lot of money at it, but I don't know if that's true. That is a, something that we need to look into further. But we also have people living in their sleeper vehicles, be they vans, campers, another type of sleeper vehicle because they have been unhoused, again, for various reasons. A lot of it because of COVID, because their rent has gone up and some landlords or managers want back pay, their back rent from the rent they lost over the time that the, that they were not paying rent. So we had asked at one point to use the camp lot at the fairgrounds because it does have a dumping station for people who live in their sleeper vehicles, but they are residents of our city. They are not transients. And there are some people living in those vehicles who have children who are going to school in the St. Green Valley School District. So I'd like to re-address that issue. As we look for housing for those people, we would like, or I personally would like to open up that conversation once again to see if we can temporarily use that camp lot at the fairgrounds or perhaps another lot and, and charge dumping fees so that they wouldn't actually camp there, but perhaps could use the facilities. So, and then air quality. Air quality is bad, as we all know. That's the bigger conversation. I would just like to push that out there that I think that the county and cities need to have a joint conversation about how we can, I know we're discussing it with greenhouse gases and EVs and buses and trains and getting vehicles off, but how can we, how can we address it in other ways to bring our county into the focus as being a solution, as looking for solutions? So that's it. Those are my three issues.
I don't think, thank you. I don't think we're going to be able to do justice to any of these topics at the bottom. We just don't have the time, but I think it's a great start. Yeah, thank you. And I want to just respond to, especially for public, for the, I'm on the master plan executive advisory board for the fairgrounds. And that public process has started with, two weeks ago, that group put together meetings with all the current users of the fairgrounds. So just so that folks know that the public, then the open groups for community members who have new ideas, who maybe aren't users currently of the fairgrounds, the groups of our community around the entire county, because it is Boulder County Fairgrounds, folks in the mountains, some of our other sectors of communities who aren't currently using that facility for events, we are inviting those folks as well. And so there'll be a whole public process in addition to what's already started. So I just want to make sure that folks know that and certainly for the public. And if that's the ideas that they want to bring in and others, we would be really, really interested in hearing all of this as that plan develops.
Again, just a few other some preferences for the, for the next meeting. I was very happy to see barrier-free homeless shelters or lower barrier homeless shelters on this agenda. I'm sorry we didn't get to talk about it, but I think it's an important thing because there are just, there are, what it's doing is it's, it's increasing the service defiant segment of our unhoused persons because they're asked, they're being asked to give up too much to get into navigation. And I, you know, regardless of whether it's constitutional, it's inhumane. But I would like to ask the commission as a group, and maybe this can be the commission's closing remarks, how you feel about the ACLU's summer statement about Boulder County's coordinated entry program? Okay. I should have thought of sending to you beforehand. I'll send it to you afterwards and we'll talk about it at a later date. Sorry to blindside you.
So it is about 7:30. It's about 7:30. So I think we'll call it a night. So thank you, everybody for doing this. It was a year off and now we're back and it's great to see everybody again. Thank you for being public servants. I think it's the highest calling, being raised by a couple parent, by a couple teachers. So thanks for being part of this. Thanks for delivering service and look forward to working with you on these issues, including ARPA.